To order for Wednesday, December the fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, of the Whittier Regional Technical Technical High School. First, our business is a pledge allegiance to the flag. You all rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands during the invasion of America and to the liberal liberty of our citizens.
Thank you. The next, excuse me, the next order of business is a public comment. Is anybody in the audience that would like to discuss anything with the school committee before we start the agenda? And being seen or heard, we will move forward. Next, Mr. Leganes will introduce new staff introductions.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and the rest of the school committee members. I'm pleased to stand here as the principal and the instructional leader to introduce new members of our team, new staff members. Andre Cormier, a paraprofessional, come on up, Andre. Paul Benedic- Dee Benedictus, autobody. Kimberly Malin, health occupations, who's been, is not present tonight. Rachel Rossi, our attendance monitor. And Nancy Amla, she's our medical assisting in the health occupations. So I'd just like to introduce you to our new staff, and congratulations, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks for coming.
Next, our business is the annual holiday float. Ms. Superintendent.
I'd like to take a walk and see the floats that was at the holiday parade in both Haverhill and in Merrimack.
All right.
How did they do in the awards?
Grand prize.
There you go, that's what we like.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move the approval of the minutes for November ninth. Regular school committee meeting.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a second?
It's got workshop.
Any additions, additions or corrections? Being heard, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
One abstention?
I gotta abstain, too, please.
Two abstentions. Where were you?
I wasn't here.
I remember that.
Mr. La Sage.
Second.
We need a motion first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I said move.
Oh, you have to speak up.
Say it again. Move to the side.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Any concerns or questions on the Treasury report? And being heard, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You abstaining? There we go, abstaining, Mr. Murphy. Treasury report. All right. One abstention. There's no old business. Now we move on to higher the agenda, reports and communications. Student representative, Mr. O'Reagan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and all other school committee members. Environmental Club is continuing its daily recycling activities, and the Model UN Club has had two after-school meetings in the last month with a good turnout and stimulating debate at both meetings. Their trip to the State House in October was also a great success. They would like to thank the school committee and the administration for their continued support. Recently, in the GSA Club, they have been looking at the coming out process, including identifying safe people and when and how to disclose. They have been referring to human rights campaign publications as a starting point for discussion and evidence-based advice. Students have been sharing their own experiences, reflecting, offering tips, and some are even making plans. Whittier Tech's first robotics team, the Maroon Monsoon, has been working diligently in order to prepare for the two thousand and seventeen season competition. Each group on the team has completed multiple tasks to ensure the success of the team in the new season. This year's build season begins on January seventh, two thousand and seventeen. Students have taken the initiative to create calendars and schedules for the build season as well as organize fundraising opportunities for their team. Members have also taken inventory on components and materials that are needed to build their robot. Students that will be building the robot have all completed their safety tests early so that they are ready to begin building as soon as the season starts. Second and third-year members have been assessing new team members in learning about first and what will be required of them in the upcoming season. Their new members have been working just as hard as the current members to achieve the same goal. The chorus is singing at the Amesbury Senior Christmas Party at the Holy Family Church on Thursday, December eighth. They performed at the superintendent's luncheon on December thirteenth, and the holiday concert is Thursday, December fifteenth, at seven P.M. in the auditorium, and is open to the public, and it's free. There will be a variety of music, including holiday tunes, and Santa will be visiting. The second round of auditions for the Spring Musical was also Wednesday, December seventh. We will be holding callbacks and cast the play before the holiday break. Multicultural Club Coats for Kids Drive is in full swing through the month of December. Our last day for the drive is January fifth. You can bring in your gently-worn winter coats or jackets to the donation box on the third floor. The Peer-to-Peer Program sponsors the Holiday Canned Food Drive, and it is underway. The shop slash homeroom that collects the most canned goods will win the traditional winner's plaque and a breakfast delivered to them on the day before we leave for the holidays. The canned goods collected will be delivered to several shelters and pantries within the district to help feed the hungry for the holidays. The Key Club has been actively involved in the community service this last month. We have volunteered at a number of places, including homeless outreach programs, the Santa parades, and Whittier's Open House Event. They are looking forward to continuing helping service efforts this upcoming month with events planned with Salvation Army. So the winter season sports have just kicked off, and the wrestling team just won their match right now. The wrestling's going on right now, and they just won. They have lost a lot of impressive seniors this year, but however, they have a promising roster that had fifty-seven students trying out. They are very excited to see where the season takes them with a very large freshman presence. The future is bright for Whittier Wrestling. They started the season with two wins and one loss, beating Nauset High School forty-seven to twenty-six and Worcester Tech forty-seven to zero. The one loss was to Tri-County Tech forty-one to thirty-six, which was a nail-biter coming down to the last minute of the last match. As the new, as the newcomers get more experience, they are hoping to make plenty of noise and keep people talking about the Whittier Wrestling program. After graduating only two seniors last year, this year's boys' basketball team has many experienced players. They had a huge group of boys come try out for the team, and as a result, all three teams, varsity JV and freshmen, are carrying very large rosters. The varsity team is comprised of fifteen very good athletes, and the hope is for a successful season. The first game is the end of the week, and they are hoping to open some eyes and show all the hard work they've been doing. Lastly, the girls' basketball team is returning many players who play with sound and aggressive defense. This could be a fun year for the Lady Wildcats as they try to make a push for the league championship, which Whittier has won four out of the last five years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I got two comments. Anybody else have a comment for us?
Once again, it's always nice to hear the students report.
I think it's commendable that the students, especially at this time of the year, donate their time and efforts in helping those less fortunate, the coats and the food and the homeless. And secondly, it's refreshing to me about the turnouts that we get in the winter sports. I have a good friend who's a coach at one of the local schools in basketball, and he was telling me that it looks like he's gonna have to use a couple of freshmen, but he doesn't have enough upperclassmen to get the roster where he wants it, so here we have, what, fifty-something, just go out for...
Just for wrestling, yeah.
Just for wrestling, yeah. So that's... Means that the atmosphere, I think, here is pretty, pretty important.
Yeah, kids really like to get involved at this school. Very, very much.
That's great. That's a good thing. Thank you. And now we move on to the superintendent's report. Ms. Lynch.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Tonight before you, personnel action. We hired a carpentry instructor and winter coaches. I also want to notify you of retirement of a math instructor. Budget update: We're meeting with department heads and administration to finalize department submissions to bill the FYI budget on Monday. We are distributing a calendar this evening with the proposed dates to meet with the executive subcommittee in the design of the budget, and I believe Ms. Cosmas will do that in her report. MCAS update: Results for the November retest should be available in mid-January. The biology retest after-school program begins January nineteenth, and the Grade Ten Title One after-school program begins on January twenty-third. Superintendent's update: On Wednesday, November sixteenth, I attended the Merrimack Valley Superintendent's Association meeting at Crest Collaborative in Methuen. We discussed the social-emotional health of students and the services available to schools in this area. On Thursday, November seventeenth, we hosted Representative Brian Dempsey, Chair of Houseways and Means here at Whittier. Mr. Early, Ms. Kara Cosmas, the business manager, along with Harry Tekejian, attended this meeting. We were able to share our plans for our statement of interest with MSBA, take a tour through the building, show some of our concerns that we have with the school and in the future of the school. We're also to show him our plans for the capital skills grant we're submitting to the state. Actually, we submitted it today. On Thursday, November seventeenth, I attended the Superintendent Mentor Program in Marlborough. It's my second year of the induction program. On Tuesday, November twenty-ninth, Whittier hosted Carol Jacobs, Superintendent Georgetown, and members of the Georgetown School Committee for lunch. I would like to thank Dr. Testa Verdi for attending that meeting, Kara Cosmas and Patricia Lowell for stepping in for me, I was feeling ill that day, so they were able to attend the luncheon, and I understand it was very informative and quite a success. On Thursday, December first, I attended the CCI meeting. These are meetings held with the District Attorney's Office, along with other state agencies, including DYS and TCF. On Tuesday, December sixth, I hosted an area superintendent meeting with Ms. Jacobs from Georgetown and Mr. Gary Reese from Amesbury. We were able to discuss concerns within our district and in our schools. On December eighth through ninth, I attended the NIASC Annual Meeting in Boston. This was an informative conference as we began preparation for our decennial visit in October. On Friday, December ninth, I attended the MASC Emerging Issues in Education Law in Boston. School attorneys give an update to school superintendents about the new laws and requirements. Much of this year, the conference was about the new public records law that's being initiated as of January first. On Monday, December twelfth, MSBA came to the school for a school survey visit. I want to thank Kara Cosmas and Harry Tekejian for spending the day touring the building. They did a, looked at the map of the building, they went and looked at every possible thing that we have here at Whittier, so they did a full inspection of the school building. On Tuesday, December thirteenth, Whittier hosted the Merrimack Valley Superintendent's Association meeting with administrative assistants. Over ninety people were in attendance, including superintendent's and ministry of assistance throughout the Merrimack Valley. And today, I hosted the Merrimack Valley Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors meeting here at the school. So the culinary department has been very, very busy. Also for you tonight, I have acceptance of donations. I respectfully request the school committee to approve the donations list dated December first from the business manager.
Mr. Chairman. Move to the second. Second. Any questions? Being heard, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous.
Also before you tonight, I have a field trip for the wrestling team. Because they're going out of state, they're going to Pelham High School for a wrestling tournament on January fourteenth. They have about forty students going. I need approval for them to go across the border.
Second.
Do you have all the proper paperwork?
Well, that's not nice.
The proper paperwork.
Yes, all the proper paperwork.
Is this a one-day trip?
One day, yeah.
Please say aye. All opposed? Unanimous.
Also, I have a field trip to Wyndham, New Hampshire for the first robotics competition, and that is on March third. We have about twenty-five students attending that competition.
Yes, Mr. Early.
Proper paperwork in hand.
Proper paperwork will be in hand when they leave for the trip.
Say aye, all approved? All opposed? Unanimous.
Also, I'd like to review the outside projects we have going on in December. We have quite a list here. Amesbury, the graphics program is, has printed materials for the Amesbury Educational Foundation. Also in Amesbury, the Whittier Chorus Sing at the Council of Aging Holiday Party on December eighth at the Holy Family Parish Hall. In Groveland, the graphics department completed finance committee handbooks. In Haverhill, the graphics department completed business cards for the Haverhill Police Department. In Haverhill, graphics completed printed materials for the Haverhill Fire Department drawing contest for the Haverhill School System. And also in Haverhill, the culinary department did pastry for a holiday party on December fourteenth for the Haverhill Police Department. Also, as we witnessed today, the holiday float, both in Haverhill and in Merrimack, the culinary department completed holiday cookies for the foster kids at the Merrimack Valley. Also, the culinary department completed holiday cookies for Ozzy Hardy Toys for Tots Annual Party held on December second. And our carpentry program for Haverhill Community TV built and delivered a five-by-ten column basis for structural support for the holiday bell. In Haverhill, the YMCA, we donated Adirondack chairs for a spring fundraiser. And Whittier will be hosting, along with the other luncheons, we'll be holding the CAC Fall Sports Banquet on December sixteenth. So we've been very busy this month.
Thank you. Yes.
I just want to, it's amazing, the things that we do and how busy these students are and the contributions to the community. I think we should be very proud of the faculty and the students, the work that they do. It's so important to be involved in our communities, and this is a leading group in that way. Very impressive.
Great.
I might add also the work the superintendent does in getting out there. We've been trying for the last, your predecessor and yourself, to get out into the community, public relations-wise, just to be seen, and, but the importance of also telling the story and hearing what the outside community needs to know or wants to tell us, so it's very important. A question I would have is how much longer do you have the induction out in Marlborough? Is this it?
No, there's one more year.
One more year? So it's a three-year?
Three-year program.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. I think it's, one of the things that we've really tried, you know, along with the leadership team, is to really give back to the community that gives us so much, and that's a message that we've really been trying to send to our students, and our faculty has done a wonderful job, you know, meeting that message. So that's all I have for you.
Yes.
I just have one question. Do the community members typically contact you? Are you being contacted by the community to say, can you help us with this?
Yes.
So that's really good, so the words out there, they know.
Yes.
Mr. Early.
Now, do they contact you personally, or do they contact other departments first?
Sometimes they contact me, sometimes they contact the vocational coordinator, sometimes they contact the front desk, who refers them to the vocational coordinator. So she, Bev DeSavo, our vocational coordinator, really is the one that, that manages all the, the community service activities from our, our vocational department.
Reason why I ask that, you get a lot of other things to do, that's why.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Before we move on to the principal's report, as, as we all know, Mr. Doug Galena, the representative from Groveland, has resigned for personal reasons, and based upon that, we, tonight we have his replacement, appointed by the Kentucky School Committee, Lisa O'Connor from Groveland. Want to welcome her aboard to the meeting, and we'll be getting her set up with anything she needs to get up to speed. Do we have his iPad for...
We have his iPad. We're working, yeah. Yep.
Great. Okay, so welcome, welcome to the committee. We're gonna move forward. Okay, next up on our agenda is the report of the principal, Mr. Leganes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and the rest of the school committee members. As we know, the winter sports are in full swing, but I want to step back a little bit and just talk about a little bit about the fall sports. And I just want to congratulate the students, the coaches, and the parents for another successful fall sports season. The Booster's Sports Banquet, if anybody was able to attend that on December first, we had over three hundred parent-students that were at this event. It was a beautiful event. Also, the tours for our eighth-grade students continue and should be completed by the holiday break. There's also a wonderful opportunity for potential students to see Whittier and what Whittier is all about. On Tuesday, December sixth, we talked about the relationships. I met with the new Triton Regional Principal, Tim Ruggieri, at Whittier, and I gave him a tour of Whittier and introduced him to our superintendent Lynch, and we talked about how important it is to develop relationships with our surrounding leaders. So that was a nice event. Also, the administration and faculty, along with some private donors, got the holiday fund off and running again this year, and this fund will hopefully alleviate some burdens for our students and families. I want to thank all that have donated so far, and special thanks goes out to Cheryl Began, our security manager, as well as the guidance department, and Elaine Kevkis for coordinating this process. And if you've been down near my office, near Cheryl, it's like Santa's workshop down there with all the presents that have been collected, so I want to thank them for really going strong in this process, which is still continuing for the holidays. So any questions? Yes?
Yes, how do, can we participate? Can we participate in that?
Yes, yes, absolutely. If you would like to donate, or donate presents, or whatever it may be, you can, you know, get in touch with any one of us and Cheryl at the front desk, and we, you know, we funnel everything towards her and then the business office as well. So it's, it's a great thing for our, you know, our families and our students as well, so. And she's been working nonstop. When I say she, Cheryl has worked, been working nonstop for the last two, two or three weeks out at the Walmarts and so on, getting, you know, much-needed materials and presents for our children and our families.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Next, the report will be from the business manager.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, members of the committee. As Ms. Lynch alluded to earlier, in your packet you have the budget calendar, and it's the proposed calendar for FY eighteen. It sort of is in line with what we've done in the past. All the department budgets have been submitted. We are reviewing them as we speak, and we will be meeting with the administration on Monday to go over them with the cluster chairs. After that, we have two subcommittee meetings, as we've done in the past, planned prior to the January and February school committee meeting. We expect to have the public, the budget meeting with all of you before our March school committee meeting, and then the public hearing and the final vote on the FY eighteen budget is expected to take place prior to the April twelfth regular school committee meeting. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the proposed budget calendar?
Are there any modifications for Ipswich that we had to, sometimes we move it forward a week or a...
No, I'm not aware of any.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
It mentions in the schedule that there's an executive committee that it goes to first.
Yes.
Can you tell us who the makeup of that executive committee is?
I can't offhand, I...
The chairs.
The chairman of each subcommittee.
Chairman of each, chairperson, excuse me, of each subcommittee, plus the chair and the vice chair.
But everybody's welcome.
Yeah, everybody's welcome.
Okay, and I promised you at the last meeting that I would update you on the bleacher project. We've been talking about this for several months, and I passed out some photos. It would have been nice, had it been June and warm and sunny, that we could have gone down and taken a walk and looked at them in person, but I don't think anybody would want to do that tonight. So I thought that the photos would give you a good sense of where we've been and what it looks like now. This morning, we met with the architect and the contractor. Even with the loss of Monday's, Monday because of the snowstorm, we are still anticipating substantial completion by Friday. We expect to have a final walkthrough next Wednesday. At that point, we will review any punch list areas. Some of the punch lists will be things that need to be done when the weather is warmer, like the loom and the seed, but other than that, we should be pretty much ready to go. And I would like to, once again, publicly thank our architects, KBA associates, and our contractor, Charter's Brothers Construction, for their continued expertise, their ongoing communication with us, their professionalism, and their commitment to bringing the project in, not only on time but also under budget. So I wanted to state again how wonderful it has been working with them, and I welcome any questions you may have on the bleacher project.
Any questions on the bleachers? Mr. Early.
What do you anticipate, the savings that we have right now?
I don't know at this point because I'm, I'm still getting the final bills in. I expect in January to be able to bring you the total, and as you remember, when I talked to you, I think in September, October, we had several other projects that we were anticipating needing to do, and we had some savings, and I should be able to have some numbers for you at that meeting.
Any other questions, Ms. Cosmas? Before she leaves, we have to have a formal vote on the budget schedule, so as our emotions matter.
Removed.
Second. Moved to second by Mr... Any questions on the budget schedule? Being heard, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you, and I hope all of you enjoy the festivities over the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. Next on air is the reporter of the chair. First up is the January agenda items. Of course, we'll have the policy updates by Mr. Irving. The business manager will give us a quarterly variance analysis. Be kind of interesting, beginning of the year, where we stand. We'll have an up-to-date budget review, and the superintendent will update us on her goals that she's the formulator. Any questions on the agenda items for next meeting? Also, we have to report tonight on the reorganization meeting date. As you know, according to our policies, I think it's the first Monday of April, and because of circumstances, sometimes we move it to the week of the regular scheduled meeting.
Chairman, I move we move it to the tenth, schedule it the tenth.
That's the Monday.
We've had trouble in the past years with snow and everything else, so this is the same week as the school committee meeting. It's worked well with other... I realize what the district agreement says, we have to suspend the rules, we could do that, but a friendly motion to move it to the tenth, the same week as the...
Same week as the scheduled meeting.
Other keying in the, in the meeting.
What month is that?
April.
April.
April tenth, it would be the reorg, right?
Yeah, it's Monday night when we have the, the dinner and then the reorganization meeting.
Then we get our meeting Wednesday night.
Then we have a regular scheduled meeting on Wednesday night. We have a motion and a second.
A second.
So a second of it, Mr. ... So first, we have to vote to suspend the rules, right?
Well, unless it's a friendly, you know, there's a motion on the floor, I can take back the motion with a second's approval, then suspend the rules and do it.
No, no. If there are any objections, we can then vote on the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. So we'll schedule the reorganization, and that'll be, what, six P.M.?
I believe so, yes.
Six P.M., the dinner, and then seven o'clock, we'll have the reorganization meeting. Thank you. Next, we have... Next, we have up is the subcommittee reports. The executive committee has not met as of yet. We plan to have a meeting based on the budget scheduling. Instructional personnel, Dr. Testaverde.
The instructional personnel committee met on November ninth. The meeting, the minutes of the meeting are included. Basically, it was to elect a chair. I was re-elected.
Great.
For I don't know how many years at this point, I was re-elected. That was the extent of the meeting.
Okay.
Right?
All right. That was it. Move to accept the minutes? Got a second. All in favor of the minutes that were in the packet, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. One extension. Plan operations, Mr. Tucker.
Plan operations has not met, but I'd like to take full credit for the holiday float.
So moved.
You may, you may. Okay, thank you. Salary negotiations, Mr. Burns is not here, so I will report based on him. The salary negotiations committee met with the superintendent to review a contract, upcoming contract. We did meet, and we will be discussing that in the executive session. We do have the minutes of that meeting. We have to vote on.
Move to accept.
Move to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any questions on the minutes? None being heard. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, extensions, one extension. Okay, thank you. Policy, Mr. Irving.
We have not met, Mr. Chairman, and I don't believe we need any policy at this point. Usually, there's a little hiatus. Probably in springtime, we'll bring something forward.
Okay, the next meeting, regular scheduled date, will be on January the eleventh next year, 2017, at a regular 7:00 PM time.
Mr. Chairman, we need a time for the executive subcommittee that same night.
We do.
I believe it's scheduled.
We do. We need a meeting.
So, is 5:30 or 6:00?
What's best for the...
What date is that?
The eleventh, January eleventh.
How many, how much business do we have?
We'll probably discuss the initial budget.
Beginning of the budget. I would think 5:30.
5:30. I mean, that's the day of my birthday.
Is that right?
5:30. We'll make sure we have cake.
Okay.
While we will ask them.
So, it'll be executive subcommittee, all welcome, you know, at 5:30 on the eleventh. Okay. And the new business, I have no new business. Does anybody wish to bring up new business for future meetings? Mr. Early.
I have a quick question on treasury report. Did we talk about it?
Yeah, sure.
No, did we?
We did. We voted on it.
I have a quick question. I was just curious with this $512,000... I'm sorry, it's a vendor, $170,000 vendor one.
What page?
Those aren't checks. They are voucher numbers. Actually, if you see what I was doing earlier, it's a voucher is a series of bills.
Is that what that is?
And it's a pile, it's a series of bills, okay? And they're just the voucher numbers.
Thank you.
On the new business, we did discuss at the last meeting that probably the first of the year, either January or February, we'd have a full report on the night school. Would you like to have that in January or February?
Whatever you prefer.
What is the wish of the committee? You want to have it right our way? Might as well. Chairman.
Well, with the holiday, it might be better for February.
February, okay.
Then I can give you an update on spring.
We'll have a budget, first budget.
Yeah, we'll get the first budget, yeah. So, why wouldn't February meeting on the night school? I understand the night school is expanding at a pretty fast rate. Yes.
Charlie, when we got to new business, do you want an update on the computer stuff? How we're doing? Is Lisa having problems? Is everything working okay? Are people moving on to their...
Yeah.
Put the light on.
I didn't mean that, and I'm just, is she, is it difficult?
Yeah, I had Lisa...
Is things coordinating well in the transition to paperless?
I had Lisa, excuse me, I had Lisa call everybody, so it'll be personal contact. And those that wish to have it mailed will have it mailed. Those that wish to have it here, and you can have both if you want. Like my friend, Mr. Murphy.
I printed my own.
Oh, you printed your own.
In color.
In color. How'd you invent it? Okay. No, I think it's, you know, it's gonna take time. Older people don't like change.
It's true.
But anybody that needs help, you know, there's people here available to help them before the meeting, you know, just let Lisa, Ms. Lynch, know, and, you know, we'll have somebody come to help you out, like me.
Well, I will say, I came today, and Kevin was wonderful. It didn't take us long. We know more than we think we know, and it's not that difficult, and I was in and out in like twenty-five minutes. So, if anybody is finding it difficult to make the transition, Kevin is wonderful. He'll do anything to help you. He was terrific today, and I want to thank everybody for helping me with that.
Either that or ask the first and second grader.
Yeah, that's true.
Ask your grandchildren. Okay, well, thank you.
Charlie, just to add to that, too, he responds very quickly. If I email him, he usually emails me within one hour with the answer.
Oh, great.
And he's been able to remotely update things on my iPad when I needed them, so it's been really great.
That's wonderful.
Very helpful.
Good. I'm glad, because it helps everybody else out. So, there is a need for executive session tonight to conduct the contract negotiations with non-union, which is the superintendent.